Does anybody need a break before we? And then now we're going to go into open session at 6:32 for work session about response to intervention. RTI.
Excellent. Well, another area of passion for me, I'm going to work very hard to keep this to an hour, but I've taken a two and a half day institute. So to start. Oops, sorry. This again. To start with, the book that we have all gotten in our training as staff is Taking Action. And everything that needs to be known, how to do it, and what it means and why, and the research is all in this book. It's like the Bible of RTI. So start with that and let me just remove that out of the way there. So Jill, are you able to adjust that on the screen so that?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, that's fine.
Covering up your whole presentation.
Thank you. So RTI, in terms of how we are approaching it here in M A S D, starts with this. A successful journey does not begin with taking the first step of facing the right direction. And we need to know why we're moving in that direction and move there intently. It'd be nice if this went to the next slide. Don't want that to be the end of the show.
You did it in less than an hour.
So what exactly is response to intervention anyway? I'm going to give you a little bit of history, starting back to 2004. The Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, the federal authorization, came in 2004. And it was meant to be a specific pathway to special education. The focus really was on what kind of a system can be put in place to pre-identify students for special education referral as quickly as possible to get them the help that they need. An RTI framework was required for all 50 states. The feds didn't necessarily care how you did it, but there had to be a framework. The Oregon Department of Education supports the Oregon RTI project in their framework because of their work within research and partnership with the University of Oregon. Sometimes you hear people say M B S S. It's interchangeable. Well, we treat systems as apart and we're supposed to imagine out of the same thing. This is a traditional tier for response to intervention. And what you'll see is three tiers. The bottom tier is the core foundation where you would want 80 to 85% of your students to be at. 10 to 15% might need remedial services. And the top tier might be 5 to 10% that need special education services. And that is what they wanted, a pathway to special education. But RTI at work is different, and that's because the pyramid is flipped. There are still three tiers, but instead of a pathway to special education, it's a pathway for every student to achieve at levels. So very big difference there. Why would we even consider modifying the kind of system that most school districts are using? Because most of them are using that traditional pyramid that's pointing upward towards special education. So why are we trying to do business differently here in Mount Angel? And I have some very good reasons to share with you. And one of them is that the expectations for learners have changed drastically. Now, all students are required to graduate. Was not the case 50 years ago, 100 years ago, 150 years ago. But also, the traditional structure was never designed to meet the expectations for today's learners. I'll give you some examples momentarily. We need options for our students. So here's a question. What if one of the reasons or the reason that we have an achievement gap is because our public system of schools was never created to produce, was created to produce an achievement gap? Meaning, what school was and what it is now are very, very different. Public schools were designed to sort and select cohorts of people into specifics of viable roles. And the research, the limited research I've done, starting with reading more books than this, but also in conferences that I've gone to. The design of public schools in the United States was that only about 10% of students made it through and graduated and went on to higher education. That was the purpose. Unfortunately, we still have the instructors in place trying to use the same system and approach. Most students, the majority of them went into agriculture, labor, or other. So there's a real disconnect there. We keep trying to put square peg into a round hole, so to speak. So the current structure of schools is outdated. The focus on individual students and their needs, we need to look more at short term, but also some long term. We also want to use RTI at work rather than Oregon RTI because it's short term, it's fluid, and it doesn't track kids in the long term and get them stuck there. Also, RTI at work has a significant role for PLCs. Oregon RTI does now have that, but they did not in the beginning. RTI at work takes all of the work of PLCs with the Duport model that we use. This is from the same company, so to speak, Solution Tree. And PLCs play a pivotal role in terms of collective ownership for all students. There it is, collective ownership. We all address the issues, not a group of maybe paraprofessionals that we send a group to for extra reading or to the specialists. We all need to be part of the solution. It's also shown to have a decrease in student referral to special education. And I can give you an example of that. The previous district I was in was very focused on a traditional RTI model, and 22% of our students were on E P's.
Whoa.
So that, yes, I'm very relieved that is not the problem here in the Mount Angel School District. But we just want to make sure that we're not intentionally drawing kids at special education when that might not be the right thing for them. But also, RTI at work is all about equity and inclusion. Again, all means all. And this is always a bonus, less paperwork. To refer a student for special education, referral, and testing is a lot of paperwork. That is not the case with RTI at work. We start with very minimal paperwork and more discussion and collegiality about what we can do together to intervene. And bonus value added here, extensions are possible in the RTI at work approach, which is not the case with the traditional RTI model. A couple of other things to think about as far as why RTI at work and not a traditional RTI framework. We just want to acknowledge that not all students are going to learn in the same way. Not all students will learn at the same speed. Some students just do lack prior skills and knowledge. Some students lack proper behaviors. And some students have a home life that is counterproductive to academic success. And yet, with all of those things, just because they're experiencing the above doesn't mean that they should be dismissed and put into a referral for special education, which sometimes can end up happening through a traditional approach. So there's our inverted pyramid. At the top is that, oh, this doesn't show on the screen, sorry about that. Tier one, access to essential grade level standards for all students. That is everybody, all, even those that are potentially significantly behind, still have the opportunity to be exposed to grade level. If they're never exposed to grade level, they're just going to get further and further behind. Tier two, additional support to master essential grade level standards. This is different than a traditional RTI model. In a traditional RTI model, tier two would be send kids somewhere for remediation already. That is not the case here. These are some kids that might need extra support to master a skill or a standard. And this includes students that maybe get As, Bs, and Cs, which is another interesting distinction. All kids need help at some point, for small things, sometimes big things. So tier two is about that. And tier one and tier two are PLC-driven. And then there's tier three, intensive remediation and universal skills. And that could be for both behavior or it could be. And we'll get further into this later in the presentation. And every student, that's what we're about. The pathway is for everybody. I'm going to pause because I've given you a lot already. Does anyone have any questions, or do you want me to just keep going? Okay, keep going. Tier one, core instruction for all, access to grade level essential standards. The purpose of tier one is to provide every single student with access to their essential grade level curriculum and effective initial teaching. Prevention is the best intervention. All students' grade level standards. In this model, students don't miss out on grade level standards because they're in the classroom when they're introduced. They may not stay for the full 60 or 90 minutes where other students are practicing at those grade level standards, but they're always part of being introduced to those standards. Tier two intervention is really about keeping the person from falling behind, no matter what grades they're getting in school. It's additional support to master, again, the same thing. It's reteaching. It's not special remediation, it's reteaching. And how you know what to teach will come later in this presentation because that's about assessment. So at the end of every unit or chapter or concept, some students are going to need additional time and support to master that grade level curriculum. That's a done deal. The focus is on reteach. Again, it's not referral for additional support. It's focused on very specific essential standards and learning targets. It's timely, it's targeted, it's flexible, and it's fluid. One of the things that they like to say for Solution Tree or RTI at work is that there's no such thing as a tier two kid. And that's because there's so much fluidity that you might need tier two reteaching just for a couple of weeks, or you might need it for a month, or you might need it in September, but not again until January. It just depends on what essential standards are being mastered. And most importantly, it takes place during the school day. It's not about an after-school program that may not have transportation for some students. Everybody is part of the solution during the school day. So title, excuse me, tier three is about remediation to help me close the gaps. I need help closing gaps. These are students that are generally at least a year or two behind, either in academics or social emotional development. That's not an age, but they need extra support. They've demonstrated they need additional supports. Some students enter each school year lacking essential foundational skills that should have been mastered in prior years. And there are several reasons why they don't get mastered, but reading, writing, number sense, and English language are some. These students do require intensive interventions to succeed. Universal skills are developed over time, but not at the expense, again, being introduced to the essential on the grade level standards. And targeted students have to receive their intensive interventions as part of their instructional school day. It's not before school or after school or zero period trying to be creative. It's during the school day. Highly trained staff should provide these interventions in targeted areas of need. And the reason this statement is up there, because there are times in some districts where students might need tier three remediation. And the person that they're sent to is a paraprofessional, which I'm not saying is wrong, but it's just that if you have such great need, you want to put your most highly trained staff. So a flip model might be that the classroom teacher stays and works with kids that need that tier three support while the para works with students that need a reteach. Does that make sense? Here's the deal. Some students require all three of these tiers to learn at high levels. But that's our job. That's what it's about. RTI at work is very, very clear about their mission. Create a systematic process that ensures every child receives the additional time and support needed to learn at that level. There is no investment in the educational lottery, which is a term for saying, it's just luck who your child might get for a teacher. I'm glad that that's the one I wanted to get. That's called the educational lottery. And we have to make sure that we make a promise that no matter which teacher a child has, your grandchild, or your neighbor's children, that there's a promise that the outcome's going to be the same for every student, which is why it's so important that all teachers are working in the PLCs to determine those essential standards. No one's very often doing something different. We're promising that every child will be exposed to the same standards. Makes sense? And of course, to ensure high levels of learning for all students. I'm just going to warn you now that this is where it gets really, it's real sit and let. Last month, for our equity and inclusion work, that was more process oriented as a group. So this is where you got to get yourself ready to just try to sit up straight. Because in learners. Yes. There are four essential principles to RTI at work. And the important reason to know all four of them is because they all work together, they integrate together. One is collective responsibility. You've heard me say that for a couple of years now. I'm starting to use the term collective ownership because I think that sends maybe a stronger message. Concentrated instruction. Well, I'm sorry, I'll go back to number one. Collective responsibility is answering the question, why are we here? What's our purpose? It's similar to a mission statement. Concentrated instruction, where is it that we need to go? Convergent assessment, which is a fancy way of saying bringing all the systems together to make sure we're using the right assessments and get the results we need to track kids in a healthy way. Where are we now? And certain access. How do we get every child there to that high level of learning? So the next couple of, the next several slides are going to be breaking down these four essential principles. And we'll start with collective ownership. Principle one, collective responsibility. A shared belief that the primary responsibility of each member of the organization is to ensure high levels of learning for every child. That's everybody. That's food service. That's the bus driver. That's the classroom teacher. It's the office manager. You name it. We are all part of making sure that all of our children are successful. And the thinking is guided by the question, again, why are we here? What's our purpose? Collective responsibility starts with adult beliefs about learning and teaching, which is all about school.
This sort of the sessions that I said it on was so interesting, the next part that you need to.
Culture is, culture is huge. Culture is the hardest thing to shift, right? So consequently, you have a few more slides on this one than you do on the other three principles. So I'm going to give you some different models of schools, calling them schools of thought. So here's school of thought number one. We believe all kids can learn based on their ability. Some of us may have been in schools, went to school with that kind of a structure. But what that means is, well, we believe that all students can learn, but the extent of their learning is determined by their innate ability or aptitude. This aptitude is relatively fixed, and we have little influence over the extent of student learning. It's our job to create multiple programs or tracks that address the different abilities of students and then guide students to the appropriate program. This ensures that students have access to the proper curriculum and optimum opportunity to master material appropriate to their ability. One school of thought. I experienced this in my presentation. Any comments? I shall keep going.
I think they just, it should just be hard stuff. We believe that all students can learn. And I'm sure that they do anyway.
Going to keep going. School of thought number two. We believe all kids can learn if they take advantage of the opportunity we give them to learn. I have teachers like that too. We believe that all students can learn if they elect to put forth the necessary effort. It's our job to provide all students with an opportunity to learn. And we fulfill our responsibility when we attempt to present lessons that are both clear and engaging. In the final analysis, however, while it is our job to teach, it is also their job to learn. We should invite students to learn, but if they elect not to do so, we must hold them accountable for their decisions. I'm not saying this is wrong or right, but will it leave some kids behind?
Yes. And there are people in the system right now that.
Yeah, if kids take advantage of me staying after school with my door open to, you know, learn a little bit more or get the help they need, then that's great. And if they don't, that's their choice, right? And this is like, I just.
I taught it, they didn't get it.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I've got another one for you. Now I got myself mixed up. There we go. School of thought number three, well, we believe all kids can learn something. And we will help all students experience academic growth in a warm and nurturing environment. We believe that all students can learn and that it is our responsibility to help all students demonstrate some growth as a result of their experience with us. The extent of the growth will be determined by a combination of the students' innate ability and effort. Although we have little impact on those factors, we can encourage all students to learn as much as possible. And we can and will create an environment that fosters their sense of well-being and self-esteem. I'm not saying it's wrong to have well-being and self-esteem for kids, but will this approach leave some kids behind?
Yeah.
The way you read it makes it sound like it's the one.
It sounds like they're going to the phone.
For every single student to learn at high levels, we have to put those schools of thought behind because each of those schools of thought does leave some kids behind. We believe all kids can learn, and we will work to help all students achieve high standards of learning. That's what RTI at work is about. We believe that all students can and must learn at relatively high levels of achievement. We're confident that students can master challenging academic material with our support and help. We establish standards all students are expected to achieve, and we continue to work with them until they have done so. I'm going to go back just for a second. When you think about those four schools of thought, think about the stress level or the healthy or maybe not healthy tension between traditional education models and what our students need and how that impacts the climate in every building. If this were your building, you might have staff wondering where they fit with this. Or are they ready to be part of one particular school of thought or another? The climate is huge, and we're still working with that. Does that make sense? Yeah. Okay. So I'm pulling policy J V D, and I did that last month too, but I pulled a different part of it. Educational equity promotes the real possibility of equality of educational results for each student and between diverse groups of students. Equity strategies are intentional, systemic, and focused on the core of the teaching and learning process. This is a direct coupling with RTI at work. And it remains our mission to ensure high levels of learning for all students. So that's a very brief overview of the first C of collective responsibility. And so where are we at in our own district with that? Bringing it from the 30,000 foot level down to where we are here. Well, we're keeping the mission front and center. This is not going away. We are continuing to offer training. And a matter of fact, we have 10 slots available for staff that want to go to national institutes this summer. We have grant money for that. We have a structure for this work of collective ownership. Our PLC teams meet weekly, and they work with each other to hold each other accountable by filling out PLC team forms. We have guiding coalitions at each school. And we have a student success team at each school. So we're working together to ensure that we have collective ownership.
And one of the pieces that struck me too, when I said in the longer training with you all, is that those that get into the field of teaching experienced the structure of one of those that was described, and they were very successful. And they tried because they got it, they worked well within that structure. And so now they're teaching in a similar way that they were taught. And so it's been, and there's no, that's not bad. And there's a new way of looking at it and thinking about it and approaching it. And so it's just, it's all quite complex and interesting.
Yes, it is. It's very challenging to shift what we knew as an apprenticeship, our own apprenticeship, either when we went through as a student or for some of us who have been educators, how we, what we bring to the classroom based on our previous experience with teachers.
Good point.
Can move on to the next C. Principle two, concentrated instruction. What in the world is that? Well, and I've mentioned this before, the most effective teachers understand that the best intervention happens through the best initial instruction. Tier one, again, is a focus on core instruction. It's systematic. Teachers are identifying essential knowledge and skills that all students must master to learn at high levels. And they're determining the specific learning needs for every single child to learn at high levels. The thinking for principle two, concentrated instruction, is guided by the question, where is it that we need to go? What is the data telling us? So the most important part of concentrating is concentrated instruction is knowing the standards and knowing which ones count. Now, that might sound interesting to you, but get this. Did you know that if every K-12 standard that's been identified by departments of education were actually taught, it would take more than 22 years to teach them to students?
It's gonna take that long, but I think there was way more than. What could be done?
We can't do that. One, because it's unreasonable. Two, poor children, and poor teachers, right? So we have to be able to identify what is most essential. For this reason, they have to, our teachers need to be able to differentiate between need to know and nice to know. They need to be able to check off that yes box. This is definitely essential. One way that that can be done is something called boulders, rocks and pebbles. Boulders have to be guaranteed. They're essential. They're must knows. The students cannot advance in their learning without these concepts or skills. Rocks. Students may be engaged with this. They're important standards, but they're nice to know standards. Mastery is not essential, but a basic understanding could be helpful. And then pebbles would be great if they're introduced. They're teachable moments. Conversations that support learning or build that firm knowledge, but mastery's not needed. Here's a great one, Roman numerals. I mean, what, do we really wanna put Roman numerals in rocks or boulders? Or is it something that we need for the rest of our life that, you know? They need to be able to master. Good example. Another way to look at this through a more scientific lens is through the work of Doug Reeves. Uh, who is an amazing instructional leader and researcher. And the way that he puts it is. As standard is essential if it can answer these three things. One, does it have endurance? Will this standard provide students with the knowledge and the skills that are valuable beyond a single test thing? If it's not something that you're gonna need, it's a test and it's probably not essential. Two. Does the standard have to be leveraged? Will this standard provide knowledge and skill set available in multiple disciplines? Gonna be a higher priority if it crosses multiple disciplines. And three readiness, will this standard provide students with knowledge and skills essential for success? In the grade or level of instruction, the next grade or level of instruction. So this is the work that we are just starting to ask ourselves as a school district. And we're getting there. It takes practice, but our teachers are doing an exemplary job of being able to vet out now. Well, this is need to know, that's nice to know. I really like this standard though. Uh, it's probably not essential. So being able to work through that has been an interesting process to watch. And to have every teacher in the same grade level have the same understanding of what's essential and. Yeah. Essential or not essential.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's the promise we, we need to make into families and to students. All right, this is a very busy slide. I'm gonna warn you now. It has a lot of, of color and a lot of visuals going on. Here's an example of dissecting an essential standard. It's a literacy standard. And there's an orange in the top corner for a reason. So hang on to that. Here's the standard. Determine the main idea of a text, differentiate between the main idea and details, recount the key details. And explain how each detail supports the main idea. So think about this. I say that this is an orange because look how many things that a kid might be tested on with this standard. That's a lot to me. However, this one standard has four smaller targets. And you will often pair teacher choose the word learning targets. That's what this is. It's breaking down a standard. For example. Determine the main idea of the text is one piece. Differentiating between the main idea and details is a second learning target. A third learning target, recount the key details. A fourth learning target, explain how each detail supports the main idea. Down below. I've got more slices. And the reason for this is because we're often so tempted as educators to test to the orange. If we test to the orange, it's gonna take weeks and weeks and weeks to be able to get proficiency or mastery on all four of those. However, if you break it down and you have four smaller tests along the way. And you can intervene sooner, your student has a better chance of getting back up to where they need to be. If you wait until the end of the unit or the end of the semester of the course. And you test the orange only without doing it so long away. As a student, how defeated do you feel if you're not able to master these things? So I use the, the example of the orange and the slices a lot that I taught with, with teachers. Does that make sense to you? Absolutely. Don't test the orange until you have to. This is my advice. Break the standard down for student success. And those were the learning targets we just saw in that previous slide. So that was the thirty thousand foot level again. Where are we at here in Mount Angel with convergent instruction? Well, again, we have weekly P L C time with those weekly P L C team forums. And part of what is required to be put in there are the essential standards and the learning targets that, that the teams identified. And the principals provide feedback to P L C teams because those forums are submitted every week. We also have additional P L C work training being offered. As I mentioned, there, there's grant funding for people to go this summer to a national institute. And someone who I, I wish could be here tonight, he was not able to, is Nick Sola. Uh, our thought partner, our coach and our trainer, he's our RTI at work teacher on specialist assignment. And he was heavily involved in supporting P L C teams as, as well as students' support teams. Guiding coalitions, everything in terms of making this work move forward. So he's an essential piece. Before I move to the third C, does anyone have any questions or comments? Or do you need to stand and take a break? Principle three, convergent assessment. Hmm, that's an interesting term. It's an ongoing process. It's a balanced assessment system. There are many types of assessments, but we, we need to look at them all and understand when to use what. It involves professional learning communities. Usually they're focused on assessments that are aimed at just a couple of learning targets. Again. Assess the wedges of the orange, not the orange in your professional learning community. No more than one essential standard to assure timely follow-up with students. Otherwise they'll just stay behind. Wedge. Electively analyzing targeted evidence to determine. Specific learning needs of each child and effectiveness of instruction the child receives. That's how teachers know not only what they need to teach, but to who and why. You may have eight students that are, have demonstrated that they didn't master the learning target. But all eight of them may have different misconceptions about why they didn't get it. So you have to analyze the data of why, what was the, the misconception that they had with their error or their thinking. And the thinking around convergent assessment is, where are we now? What is, what is today telling me about the data that's in front of me? Balanced assessment. This is an area we're going to be focusing on next year. It's a systematic approach of gathering assessment evidence. Reflecting student learning of targets and standards. The data is used for intentional purposes and audiences at each level of the system. The use of assessment types is carefully scheduled. Discussion of results that lead to changes in teaching and practice. And I've got. The orange seed, which is one type of assessment. The orange slice, a wedge. The orange, and then if you're really lucky and you get to participate in smarter balance statewide testing, you get the crate. You get the crate of oranges. The next slide, I think it's very, very busy. If I'm thinking correctly, yes. So you have a handout on this instead if you wanna look at it that way. And I'll go as quickly as I can to give you this. The important thing to know about this handout is, is knowing when to use what type of assessment. And why you would use it and who, who wants that information? So if I start at the top, we've got a crate of oranges. That's the smarter balanced. And also the student belonging survey goes there. It's usually annual. And it's meant for districts or departments to review. Uh, and see if adjustments for the following year need to be made. The next row down is a, a possibility or an opportunity for testing the orange. Benchmark assessment, universal screeners, that's MAP testing at secondary E Z C B M at Saint Mary's. Uh, usually done three times a year. And there are a lot of questions to consider there, but it really depends on which team is looking at the results. Maybe I look at the results differently than the district admin team or a P L C team would take that information and look at it very differently. Uh, or from a curriculum and instruction lens and what we might be offering through textbooks would be another way to look at it. Does that make sense? So, uh, and, and of course assessments go there as well. Um, and of course can be three times, two times a year, but it also can be by the quarter. And it's important to know, did a large number of students miss an item and why? What were their? Uh, what is it that they missed? How might we revise our curriculum next year to meet the learning needs suggested by the data? The last three are the most important for P L C and RTI work. Summit of assessments are the orange slices. It's really looked at by department or grade level teams, P L C or an individual teacher. It's usually by the unit when they're completed. And it tells the teachers or the department or the administrator. Which students didn't master the essential standards and how will students get that additional time, that tier two intervention support during the school day? Common informative assessments. The difference between common formative assessments and formative assessments is the word common. Common means that it's P L C common working. You can also use format of assessments individually as a teacher. But in this case, common formative assessments are very helpful to P L C teams. Uh, and it really determines how often the teams need, and in our district, that's every week. How will learning needs for individuals and groups be addressed based on the mastery of the learning targets and essential standards? They should be happening every couple of weeks. They shouldn't be waiting any longer than that because then our kids are falling behind again. And then the last one, formative assessments is the orange seed. Individual teacher and student, this should be happening daily and it doesn't have to be quiz. It can be a whiteboard. It can be a thumbs up, thumbs down, any way that you can get feedback from your students on how they're doing. Um, but how are the students using this data to identify their own learning strengths and next steps? And how will teachers use the data to plan and adjust their instruction? That was a lot to take in on one slide. Any questions on that? Literally, we could talk for hours just about this one slide. It's a lot to digest. So what is convergent assessment looking like in Mount Angel? Again, weekly P L C time, it's covering all the four Cs in some way. Uh, reviewing common formative assessment data. The P L C team forums capture that. They analyze the data. They look at student misconceptions. They look at trends. They regroup kids based on not only if they didn't master it, but why didn't they master it? Do we need to further separate the groups? One of the questions that I often ask teachers is, would you rather have a group of, um. Thirty students that haven't met proficiency, but you know exactly the one thing that they need? Or would you rather have a group of eight who have eight different reasons why they didn't meet the standard? It's really important to break it down. We also have schools with their SIP plans this year and SMART goals that are requiring progress monitoring. We have intensive training that's taken place for administrators this spring. And we do have an internationally recognized author and expert on assessment who will be coming to Mount Angel on August twenty-ninth. For a full day of the service with licensed staff. Uh, her name is Nicole Dimmich and she's coming, uh, from RTI at work, so most of the training. I've heard her many times. She's very good. Love to have you there. Last C. Oops, almost. I liked this quote because I find it to be really true. The power is always in the conversation, not necessarily the product. It's not the assessments that change behavior, but rather the conversation around the evidence that changes the behavior. Which is what that P L C time and analyzing that data is all about. Now we'll go to principle four. Certain access. This is a guarantee. A systematic process that guarantees every student will receive the time and support needed to learn at high levels. The thinking is guided by the question, how do we get every child there? This is a very busy inverted pyramid. So what you'll see again up at the top right in green, that's P L C work. They're the experts in that area for essential standards and reteaching standards. You wouldn't want other people in the building to take over that section of the inverted pyramid because those are the experts. On the left side. Are the social and emotional tiers of one, two and three, and that's where the guiding coalition does beautiful work. They're really focusing on what are the essential common expectations? In our school. What can we do to support if our kids are falling behind socially and emotionally, behaviorally? And what are the intensive remediation supports that we have in place for our students? If they're missing those universal skills of being able to do school. This next one I have in your packet for you. And because this is again, very busy and hard to look at. But this is an example of the arch guy at work pyramid when it's filled in or at least partially filled in. So what it does is it breaks down for you and gives you an example of what could be taking place in a school. So on the right side in green, you'll see, uh, where P L C's focus is on core instruction. Designated P L C time, essential standards. Uh, and agreed upon common standards for singletons. And those are student, uh, excuse me, teachers that work by themselves and may not have a team. Pretty common at secondary in Mount Angel, yeah, right? Uh, they're also again, the pros at reteaching with targeted students. Uh, students are identified based on formative assessment data, interventions and extensions can be provided. And then the whole left side of the inverted pyramid are all examples of things that we have or are working toward in the Mount Angel School District. At tier one, tier two, tier three, uh, for tier one, for example. Every school's doing positive behavior and intervention supports, P B I S. Saint Mary's is doing PACS. Those are common expectations for behavior. And we want that for every student. So it's tier one. And then there are supportive practices in place for tier two and tier three. Any questions on this?
Yes. Um, I have several and they all kinda came together here. Um, you only mentioned. Guiding coalition and does that, well, from what I heard you say is that, that kind of helps or directs behavior. The learning of behaviors. How? How? How is that working for us?
It's very initial. The good news is that we have strong guiding coalitions in every school. They're still trying to. They're still trying to figure out what P B N R S is to them. They have some basics. Like I said, they started with long hanging fruit this year at secondary. One of them was a common expectation there will be no cell phones in class. Well, you know what? Before this year, you would think that that was established and posted over there, but it wasn't. So it's a long hanging fruit example of P B I S that will get extended next year. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it was sorta.
Sorry, keep going.
I A's, do the I A's have any? Expectation of learning the R T I system? Cause what I saw in someone, this was like, wow, that's actually. You know, it's the instructional system is pulling kids out. It would be important to know why.
Yes. And that is a request that teachers have had. Because of our budget constraints this year, we were not able to make that happen. It's something I've actually put in place. There's just time where, uh, our classified staff are paid to stay another half an hour and just.
And I'm even taking you a step back from the introduction of what this is and how it affects them even without that additional time. To discuss it. Did your example of sometimes a teacher keeps the tier three and sends out everyone else? Makes sense because I, I see it both ways. And, but do the, do those I A's really understand? The whys and the hows and what they should be looking for?
No.
In the interim.
Not right now because I haven't gone through the new term. Yeah.
And. When we have students and kind of, it only mentions it once here with extensions. When we have students who are beyond the, um, current standards, how does the R T I model like cope with that or direct that?
I love this question and it's one that we're working really hard to, to tackle. Uh, because we're still trying to get our answer out there on how to provide. Support for students that aren't meeting the standard yet. But where we are going with this will be that while some, at secondary specifically. While some students will need to go to interventions to support not, we not meeting a standard or a learning target. Others would go to an extension. That is not meant to be a free term. It's not meant to be. It's an extension of the standard that they already mastered, but with additional, additional concepts, not paperwork. But extending the standard of mastery. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
I've seen that personally with my child, period of the extensions. His teacher does a real job of.
Yeah, and, and I'll, and I'll say yes to that, but it's really on a.
Teaching for a teacher basis.
By case of basis. It's not something that's built in. And, and I can say like, uh, last year my, my student got a lot of that and it was entirely due to the teacher that he had. And this year the teacher he has is trying, but it's, it's not the same. And that's okay. It's not a big deal, but I'm wondering, uh, because Erica still owes me a, wanted to OD give her for her. Her, uh, tag program.
Yeah.
It's still.
That's due in May.
But we just.
Oh, Mark, okay.
I thought, I heard her say, this is due by March. Now maybe we don't get an answer back till then. She said it was due by March.
I will double check.
And I guess my, my question is to that. Better, it's not here. Let me, um, you know, tag here has always been a little placey. Um, and it kinda comes and goes and. And I see this as a, a method of building up our tier threes, getting everybody to a standard. And then, you know, using, um, this kind of model to help extend those kids as part of that, whether they're in time or not.
Right.
The other question I had, last, kind of last question is with the guiding coalition again in, in classroom behavior. How does, uh, an individual teacher? Get help from the guiding coalition? For, and I, you said it was in a second C and I agree with that, but that's something that eventually becomes when you have. Behavior in a classroom that prevents students, the, the eighty percent of students from giving the whole group. Lesson?
Yes and no. So there's actually a different, more powerful venue for teachers to take when they. They're looking for support and that's the S S T process. The S S T process is about teachers coming together, looking at a menu of interventions and supporting each other. And they can request to come to an S S T meeting anytime. And it's just a way of problem solve. So, um, and I forgot about that. So, but it's connected, right? It's a really important piece to all of this.
So I see this as putting a lot of those pieces together where before it was very not.
It takes time. The building of the system and the structure is the key. Because oftentimes it felt like sometimes we're going to go and ever try to build the system and try to play catch up.
Mm-hmm.
When you, you gotta get ahead of the whole thing. And so hopefully that's.
And, and I like the fact that we're, we're in it to win it as far as this is not something that. Next year it'll be different. So I'm gonna.
Right, right, yeah.
And, and I appreciate that because it's, it's almost like a policy. It's like, this is the written policy, how we're gonna make it work. And it's, you know, this is the how is we're gonna, how, how we're gonna do it.
This is monumental.
Yeah.
Because you have put the structure into place. It's gonna take quite a few years. Cause you could envision in each of the areas, there are going to be people that are on board. There are people that are catching up. There are people that are, you know, this two show pass. And I mean, you're taking all of this and you're deprivatizing the practice of teaching. To begin with, and that's difficult for a lot of people.
Oh, that's a powerful phrase.
You know?
I like that.
And so what you're doing is, is that in itself is monumental.
But, but I, I wouldn't agree to disagree, but because I think a lot of this is almost like you're empowering that teacher. To really understand their students and where they're at and to be able to have a system of. Now, how do I have the students who aren't where they should be and how?
Well, because you have your P L C to help you do that. So you're, you're no longer a think tank by yourself.
Yes.
You are a think tank of a group and then you have all these systems in place to help with that. But yet.
I see what you're saying.
You know, see, so what you're doing now is, it's really hard because. Maybe I've never done business like this, you know, as a teacher and now all of a sudden I have to. You know, kind of think, you know, use the think tank. And in time, they'll use the think tank for both sides. They'll use it or. Behave, you know, they'll use it for that area and then they'll use it for learning also. Cause, but it takes a while. I would say, Rachel. Are you thinking three years, at least three years to, and some people will leave, which is okay. Because that's not their philosophical. You know, my question is. Is the high school, I'm just, clearly you can see I'm, and I've never worked in a high school. So it's a good place for me to be. Uh, you know, when you're a standalone person. How, what support do we give to those people that? I've always done it this way. I mean, good or bad, they could be the best teacher in the world, but now you want me to do business differently. And how does that all change and who helps? You know, administrators are learning and, you know, my assessments are now different. Now I have to, you know, so. That is huge. I'm sure there's a lot of rumblings in the school about this. Good rumblings, but rumblings.
And, and part of that, I believe, very good over chain is that. There are a lot of people that want the process to be like this.
It might be.
But in reality, it's.
Like, exactly.
Like this.
Right.
And. We need to give ourselves grace.
Yes.
To experiment, to get messy and to, to make some mistakes along the way. The hardest part for the teacher that have all gone through this training is that they leave thinking, yeah, I wanna do this. Let's get in there and do it. And I have to remind them when they start to feel discouraged that the presenters. Have practiced this literally for five to seven years before they were able to present it. Um, but it's not going away.
No. I mean, it's a huge shift in, you know, in the way. It's a good shift. It's a, you know, it's, I mean, you have to do business, but that's a lot for teachers to take on.
And they're working really hard.
They've got the time. You're not expecting overnight.
And really, I, I appreciate the way you started out the slides with kind of decomposing, deconstructing. The, the educational methodologies of, of past or current. Now that is much different than this. Now we were, we have built in inequities. And currently in the past.
And it was.
Because the way we're living at.
Yeah, it was intentionally designed.
Yeah, right.
And we're still using, we're still using schedules at the high school that we had. That our parents had, that our grandparents had. We've got to look at the master schedule. Yeah, to rebuild it. Yeah, it's, it's huge.
So there are people that have taken this on, they, in each of the levels that are. You know, cause you have the early in for, you know, beginners who are doing it already and they're, they become good examples for others.
And we have early adopters.
Early adopters. The influencers that if you can get.
The actual champion.
Yes, and then, yes, and then you get more people because, so they have them at each level.
Every school has fans that are out there doing the work. And, and you know where they're, they're doing their best work is on the guiding coalition. To make sure that, that things are running smoothly and consistently.
So I'm gonna make some assumption about the guiding coalition. Principals on it, counselors on it. Any other, uh, specialist, so like a reading specialist or, or. Behavior person is on it. And then. Uh, I A teacher or two, or is there an I A on it?
There's not an I A on it because the, the, um, requirement is they have to have gone through this training to understand it. So that's not part of the system at this point. Anyone can fill out an application to be on the guiding coalition, that they need to have some skin in the game in order to be committed to doing it. That's why each school uses that.
Is there an I, is there a possibility of, uh, you know, maybe training some I A's? Or how that would work or behave? I don't know.
I only asked a question because hearing what you're saying in this presentation. As, as myself as in, so and I mostly, and it makes a lot more sense understanding what this all means. Like understanding how to communicate what you're seeing in a, in a fallout. With a group of students and how to communicate that back to the teacher, knowing what they're looking for. Kind of a way that with all of this in mind, is much different than I've ever thought about.
Okay.
So just having the knowledge of even, maybe they, a two hour long presentation of R T I for, for the I A's. And while they aren't on a guiding coalition team, they would have maybe a better understanding of.
Yeah.
What the communication should be, what they should be looking for and what the communication should be back to the teacher. Uh, because if there's, because that flow of communication directly affects the P L, the students in the P L C. You know, on the, on the charts, on the form. And if, if, uh, if an understudy say, well. Yeah, he took that, that subtraction that they're done. Take them out and pull them out. But if, if this, if the I A doesn't know that that's what they're looking for all the time. You know, it's like they just keep getting the same kids. It's the same group keeps coming, keeps coming. So.
This powerful feedback and actually what I'm, what I'm thinking as I'm processing this is that. A lot of Wednesday mornings, uh, Erica Gordon has been doing professional learning with our classified staff. On social peripheral development and maybe we could take some of those days next year. But what, that's where the P L C's are in place for license. We could offer some of the R T I.
Even if it's just like, uh, again, just like two hours, just so they have a better idea. Because having the guiding coalition and having it all together makes a lot clearer picture. For some of the students on the time and the opens. So. Kind of brings it all together. Your, your busy slide is actually really good.
Oh, good, okay. I think I'm almost done. Can you hang in there another five minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. So what does certain access look like in the Mount Angel School District? At tier one, prevention is again the best intervention. We have our weekly P L C team meetings. We have the well-functioning guiding coalitions at each school. We have positive behavior interventions and supports. Uh, some schools a little bit more developed than others, but they're all on a grid, right? So it's good.
And, yeah. Guiding coalition need weekly or monthly or?
I need twice a month, but at least once a month. And at the beginning of the year, it was almost weekly.
Okay.
Strong commitment to, to get the work up and going. Great question. At tier two, we have our P L C teams analyzing common formative assessments, determine what to reteach. We have the student, uh, support team process, which is a pathway for teachers to support each other. Excess interventions that they could implement with students. Specifically, we have interventions for attendance. We have interventions for behavior. We have interventions for kids that don't wanna finish their work. We have pages and pages and interventions on the menu you can choose from. And then that teacher can pull what they think is the right fit for them and come back in a couple of weeks. And let the team know how they did and support them to see if they need to try some new. And then we have secondary tier two days this year. Ideally, I'd like to see them doing a secondary tier two days, uh, two days a week, but we're not there yet. Because the secondary world and scheduling is very, very different. It's a totally different beast than elementary. But they're trying it and it's messy, but they're in it. They're trying it. Um, if you ever wanna see an example of it, M A M's is doing some great work. They have a tier two day coming up. Uh, right after spring break, let me know and we can walk down there together and watch it. And then at tier three, we have social and emotional support for individual students at all three levels. Uh, special education and specialist support for students. As the train left the station and if so, where is it headed? Well, this is that interesting tension because we can't wait for everyone to get on board. The train has indeed left the station. Uh, but most people are seeing and becoming more committed when they're seeing things that work. And the, the secondary tier two days that M A M's is doing is a perfect example of that. There was a lot of curiosity about whether it would work or not. But you know what? After doing a couple of them, the teachers, I heard nothing but great feedback. Uh, about them getting in there and doing it and seeing that it made a difference. That just kind of fills their bucket, you know? Some teachers need that. And you'll be able to get good feedback and fill the bucket, so. Uh, in the next three hundred and sixty-five days, this is where I want us to head with tier one. Continue to refine, uh, understanding and practice of essential standards, learning targets and communicating them to students. Increased application of authentic and meaningful feedback to teachers throughout the observation and evaluation cycle. That means our administrators doing that work to provide meaningful, authentic feedback. Increased focus on student feedback back to the teachers. Increase in understanding and application of a balanced assessment system, which is that one page you have all in blue. Um, so that everyone has a strong understanding of which one to use and why and what to do with the results. Increased use of formative and commative and common formative assessments and analysis of data by P L C teams. Continue to offer quality training by internationally recognized offers and trainers. And then continue to offer opportunities for staff to attend R T I at work and P L C at work institutes, as long as the grant law will allow us to do so. Where is the conference in the summer? Well, we have an R T I conference in Bellevue, so it's really close at the beginning of August. Um, if anyone here would like to go, let me know. Something to do in the summer. And then the P L C at work institutes are several places throughout the United States. Yeah.
And who goals is the answer?
So here's a dumb, dumb question.
Um, sorry.
Back on hidden schools. Is there any kind of like training? Backgrounded in schools, is there any kind of a like train the trainer? So that you could have someone in different. Maybe not at the high level. But at some level to be able to train employees or give.
Yes and yes. That's a great question.
Great question.
So Nick, so Nick, so I have this some of that. The reason that I had everyone attend the institute virtually without a train to train them all is because I wanted them to have. I was following the experience and everyone to hear the same message. Over.
And maybe even like the retraining or the updates or.
Is Nick so just a instructional coach or?
He's the RTI MTSS tutor.
Okay. Okay, and so is he getting more training? To keep possibly. To, you know, become the person that would. Do some of this coaching work at the.
He's ready to do it, he's he's been doing coaching naturally at both schools. Mams and JFK to, you know, help keep them on track, answer questions, get encouragement, tell them a lot, you know, affirming that the messiness is gonna happen. It's okay.
It's good.
Yeah. Tier two in the next three hundred and sixty-five days to keep me from falling behind. Continue to refine our understanding of SST and the practices for staff. That's still new this year, new thing, so it takes time to learn how to access it. It's weekly in every building, but people still, and some people aren't ready to get their toe in the water yet. We want to continue to shorten the assessment cycle so that students receive intervention support any time and manner. Stop testing of launch. Continue to test the orange slice and then act as quickly as you can on that. Use common formative assessments results to identify who needs interventions, what type of interventions and who's going to provide them. Continue with student intervention support during the school day. And my expectation is that by October one, both secondary schools will be offering interventions during the school day on minimum of. The role of special education staff will be refined to provide support for students not receiving special education services during during tier two time. What I mean by that is there's just no law that says that a non. A non IEP student, our student not receiving special education services can't go to the special education teacher. It happens. You can't send your students on IEPs to a different teacher. But you can send students to the spent teacher if they're learning the same thing and that the intervention is the same thing, why not? As long as it doesn't make your, you know, like twenty kids in a class speaking that. But we want to continue to just refine that role of them. Support them.
We must, how many sped teachers do we have? We have one at St.
One at each school.
One at each school.
And then begin researching and implementing extensions for students to meet them. As part of the messiness.
The special education staff engaging with non IEP students. Can lead to de-stigmatization, that can lead to better inclusion, better acceptance of one another, all that.
All that.
I think too, sometimes those special education student teachers. Have a skill set that benefits some of those students.
Absolutely, yeah.
IA or a classroom teacher or another classroom teacher might not. See or have or realize that they're they're more looking at a student saying, oh, this and this thing. Right off the bat.
Completely sounds.
Most different perspective.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, to help me close the gap, tier three, this one's shorter. Two or three relies on appropriate staffing and funding. We don't have a lot of that, so we're doing what we can with what we've got. Special education is a tier three support. Counselors and or classified behavior specialists provide tier three support. Intervention specialists such as Mrs. Owen at Saint Mary's provide tier three support. All of our English language development teachers provide tier three support. More than an hour, but great discussions.
Yeah, very good.
We have other questions or thoughts that I can answer for you, this was a huge topic. Thank you. You're welcome.
When I sat in with teachers learning this stuff this summer, I was so impressed with. The singletons, like the PE teacher from the middle school talking to the PE teacher from the grade school. And figuring out how they could work together to be. Coming up with, you know, what the essential standards are. Because there's carryover and kind of help one another, so they were developing these. You know, these lights were going off about how they don't have to be alone in this. And even like the physics teacher talking to the middle school math teacher about, you know, some of the essential standards in. Middle school math definitely can help with physics and history and all that good stuff, so.
Absolutely, collective ownership is what we want.
It was. Inspiring to see that just happen.
Well, thank you, and if you do have other questions, you know where to find.
Lucky for you, we do. Anything else before we adjourn?
Thank you, Rachel. Thank you, I'm in there.